And we are live on TCTV Channel 8 and YouTube.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District Committee to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mrs. Mattson is going to hold the flag for us. So if we could all stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right, I did want to announce that this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Templeton Community TV. You could watch us on Facebook or on the YouTube channel. And the recording will be out. Just pulling it up to keep an eye. I will also announce who we have on camera tonight. Just give me one minute to update my notes. So for the school committee, we have Mr. Marx, who is attending via audio right now. He will join us via video shortly, but he is on the call, but audio only. Mrs. Mattson, Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Kojal, Mrs. Trifilo, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. Dr. Kazimant, our Superintendent of Schools, our Assistant Superintendent Kate Kalis. Anne Marie Geister, our Business Manager, Susan Barney, our awesome Admin Executive Assistant. I have to emphasize that. See, Mr. Dr. Kazimant smiling. We also have on the screen with us this evening, and welcome to the Principal of our High School, Colby Young. We have the Vice Principal of the High School, Janet Brown, and we have the Vice Principal of Templeton Elementary School, Courtney Bashan with us. So I think I have got everybody just checking the boxes. Update my list. Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to point out that it is our wonderful Administrative Assistant's Birthday tomorrow. And so I'm saying that because, because, and so I just want to make sure everyone knows that.
Duly noted.
Thank you for that, Dr. Kazimant. Thank you.
Maybe we'll sing later.
Twenty-nine. Can't believe it.
And we will have some other folks. Ashley Niggle and Matt Holloway will be joining us later in the agenda.
Perfect, and we'll announce them once they join in. I do anticipate Mrs. Chartier and Mr. Mason will be joining us shortly, and I'll announce once they join in, and we'll make note of that for the time. Our first order of business tonight is we have some minutes to approve. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, if someone is so inclined to do so.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Kojal and a second from Mrs. Robichaud. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal? Looks frozen, let's see. We'll go to Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Hughes says yes. Mrs. Kojal, how do you vote? I think she's having difficulties.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. All right, so that was unanimous. Next up, we have the approval of the meeting minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. I would entertain a motion if someone is so inclined.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Kojal. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns about the minutes? Being and hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was, they were approved unanimously. And lastly, we have the approval of the meeting minutes of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. I would entertain a motion to do so if someone's so inclined.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Kojal. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on the minutes? Being and hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Next up for our business are the bills and payroll. I would recommend, I would accept a motion to recommend to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mrs. Kojal. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Was that Mrs. Robichaud? I believe so, yes, okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the bills or payroll? Being and hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Okay. Next up, we'll move on to appearances. We have a student rep. I don't see any of the reps joining us. I know that normally Abby and Callie are with us. I don't see either here yet. I did get a notice from Abby that she wouldn't be able to make the meeting, and she did prepare a statement. I'd like to give the rest of the reps a few more minutes to attend. So if nobody objects, I would like to just move on to the next appearance, and then we'll go back to the student reps when hopefully they attend. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay. So next up, we have an appearance, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazimant to make an introduction. We're going to talk about our holiday gift drive, and I believe Janet Brown, our NRHS Vice Principal, will be speaking, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Kazimant first to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and they will be just a few words. What I realize is that, that we have a lot of new folks whom many have not met because of, you know, COVID- nineteen in our current configuration. So Janet Brown, who is in fact our Assistant Principal at the, at the high school, and she's here tonight, and what I'm going to do is I'm truly going to turn this over to Colby and Janet, quite frankly, so they can talk a little bit about, and I know that they're going to also involve Courtney and a few others. So with your permission, I'll just turn it over to Colby and he can, and Janet, and they can introduce themselves or, and go through what we're here to talk about in terms of the holiday giving.
Great, thank you.
And once you, sorry. Once you introduce yourselves, I'll share the screen so you'll have the information available.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. So hi, everyone. Nice to, nice to see everyone this evening. Thank you very much for the invitation, Dr. Kazimant, to speak about this. And in true fashion, you turned it over to me. I'm going to turn it over to the one you really want to hear from, which is Janet Brown and then Courtney Bashan. Thank you.
Okay, I think you can wait a minute before sharing, sharing the screen in the summary. Good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be here. I'd like to talk tonight about the Winter Gift Drive, led by Courtney Bashan at TES, myself and Kathleen Jazinski at the Middle High Level. The district-wide Winter Gift Drive was born early this December. Courtney and I would like to share with you how our communities and schools came together to provide gifts and essentials like shoes and coats and gloves for the needy students of our district. In total, ninety-four children, teens, and their families received gifts from our teachers and staff. Our district employees eagerly donated a part of their salary to care for those in need. From buying gifts to donating money, our district, in partnership with our community, provided for twenty-two elementary students, twenty middle-high students, thirty-six students in cross-district K-through-twelve groupings, three family members of needy students, and thirteen younger siblings who are not yet old enough to be warriors. Our Winter Gift Drive would not have been possible without the efforts of our elf teams. And these teams included, on the middle-high school level, the high school SRT team. I'd like to acknowledge Tina Lashua for pursuing how to set up the online donation system that we use called Warrior Wishes with Victoria Chartier. This account raised one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars from the townpeople and district employees. At present, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-one cent check is due to be cut to the Templeton Food Pantry to help support families with food insecurities this winter. And that number is still rising. Just today, the high school faculty asked if there was still time to donate, and their goal is to raise the donation to just at or over a thousand dollars. Counselors at the high school level, Chrissanne Stankholm and Patty O'Connor, were instrumental in contacting families and reaching out to students about their needs and wishes for the drive. And finally, no presentation of the Winter Gift Drive would be complete without honoring the work of Kathleen Jazinski. Kathleen's vision for a district-wide giving event and her dedication to matching families with community organizations led me to start thinking of her as the boss elf. She worked tirelessly to support needy students and families. In total, Courtney and I estimate that our community supported each other with a total gift-giving donation estimated between sixty-five hundred dollars and seven thousand dollars. I'd like to turn the virtual floor, if you will, over to Courtney to talk more about our community partnerships and the drive on the elementary level.
Courtney, I think you're muted.
Look at that. Sorry about that. You think I'd be better by now, but I'm just not. I want to start by saying what an absolute pleasure it has been teaming with the middle and high school this year to make the Winter Gift Drive a true success, all the way from pre-K to twelve. In years past, we've conducted the Winter Gift Drive, but it's been in isolation. And I have to say, what, what they say is true. Everything is better when we do it together. Our gift drive surpassed what we've been able to do in recent years, and this couldn't have happened at a better time with so many families struggling due to circumstances out of their control. Our ability to support students and their families couldn't have been done without the help of so many individuals and the community organizations that they represent and member with. And I'd like to take just a few minutes to give shout-outs to these individuals. The first one is James Breheo with the American Legion. Jim has worked tirelessly to provide new coats, mittens, hats, boots, sneakers, and to also provide gifts for many of our families. He doesn't just pair with us in the winter. He works with us all year, and we're very, very thankful for him. The next person I'd like to thank is Susan Lejoy and the members of the Friends of the Templeton Elders. They provided over four thousand dollars in gift cards to both Walmart and Market Basket for our families. I'd like to shout out Officer Fliss and the Templeton Police Department, who fulfilled wish lists for several of our students and their families. I'd also like to say a big thank you to Maureen Moran from the Congregational Church of Phillipston and Michelle Cody from the New Hope Bible Chapel and the Templeton Food Pantry. These two memberships reached out, shopped, and fulfilled close to thirty student wish lists and delivered all of these gifts to the schools so they could be distributed. Our community coming together to provide gifts for family allowed us the opportunity to give back monetarily to the food pantry, something we are incredibly proud of and so grateful to be able to do. And I don't know how to say thank you enough to our community. We are in awe and so thankful for all of you.
If I could just add, I think it would be inappropriate, because they will not acknowledge themselves, to not acknowledge the work of Ms. Brown and Ms. Bashan. When, when one, meaning me, receives emails north of four AM during the holiday season in support of the gift drive, you know that these two administrators were working incredibly, incredibly hard. And I think they were really bullied by the tremendous generosity of our faculty and our community members. And honestly, it was a daily reminder of really what that season is, is, is all about. So tremendous thanks also to Ms. Brown and Ms. Bashan.
Great, thank you so much for spearheading such a wonderful, wonderful event for our school and our school community. You know, shout out, as Mr. Young just said, to Ms. Brown and Ms. Bashan, and I know Ms. Jazinski isn't on the call right now. What we have been able, we, and I use "we," which, but you have been able to accomplish and bring the community together to do is just unbelievable, those numbers that you said. And, and my heart just really says thank you for spearheading this, makes such a difference in our schools or for our students and for the community, and finding ways to increase and enhance the partnerships that we have. It's a great, great story, so thank you so much for doing that. I just want to put it out to the committee. Does anyone have any comments or other questions? I don't see anybody. But again, thank you so much for your time and efforts on this. It is truly appreciated. And, you know, we say it often that we couldn't be as successful without the dedication of our, our staff. And this is just another example of that dedication that we have to do everything we can to support the students and the communities we live in and work in. So thank you. Next up, I believe, is Dr. Kazimant. If you want to take over, we were going to talk about the Project Three-Fifty-One Representatives, and I'll have you start and hand it off.
So one of the, well, I have a lot of favorite things, but one of them, quite frankly, is when we, when the middle school generally back, back in the day, but now the high school, identify two individuals to represent Narragansett Regional for Project Three-Fifty-One. And really, it's been, Project Three-Fifty-One has, oh, I think since two thousand and eleven, if I, if memory serves. And really, it pick, it represents three hundred and fifty-one towns and cities in the state, and students are called to service. And they generally speak, pick a one focus and work together to, to complete that focus. So every year, and generally, we usually get a photo op and we actually get to, you know, meet the students live. And, but this year, it just wasn't possible. But it's still nonetheless quite, quite an honor. And, you know, for the five years that I have been here, we, we send excellent students to represent us, and this year is, is no different. And so I'm going to turn over the honor of introducing, or at least naming them, to, is he still up, Colby? And in, but again, this is quite an honor and very, very, very happy for us selfishly, but for them to have been selected.
Thank you, Dr. Kazimant. And as you mentioned, I mean, this is the great stuff, right? Introducing the names of students who have been the recipients of really an amazing honor. So as many of you well know, and Dr. Kazimant outlined, Project Three-Fifty-One is really about youth leadership and community service and cultivating the voice of the next generation of students. And so Project Three-Fifty-One is named after Massachusetts' three hundred and fifty-one towns and cities. And so Narragansett has the tremendous honor to send a student from Templeton, Baldwinville, and from Phillipston. So we have two representatives, and they are both eighth graders nominated by the team of eighth-grade teachers that know them well. And representing Templeton is Madison Hemlin, who is incredibly involved in her community through hockey programs, is seeking to join as just an eighth grader, our Warrior Council, that is new to the high school. She volunteers helping young students learn to skate and is active in National Park Cleanup Days. So Madison is incredibly involved in, in our community. And she will, along with our second representative, who I'll mention in a minute, Ambassador, technically their call, will attend a youth summit where they're going to meet the other three hundred and forty-nine youth voices from around the state. And so they will kind of cultivate with the help of a mentor, a community service project, which this year of all years, with new state standards for MCAS in history, is a particularly great year to send students for this honor. And on this day, inauguration day of all days, right? Our second ambassador representing Phillipston is Alexander Olson. Alex is incredibly active in the community, particularly through his church. And he works in particular with the food pantry, helping get food to families in need. And he's been part of the National Junior Honor Society. And he's also a Boy Scout who is gearing up to take on his Eagle Scout project. So we are tremendously proud of both Alex and Madison to represent us going forward and their, their first foray into the work and as part of the youth summit will be in March. Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations to Madison and Alex. It is a great opportunity for our students to be involved in Project Three-Fifty-One. I know in the past, we've had the opportunity, as Dr. Kazimant said, for the photo op. Perhaps as time goes on and maybe some circumstances change, we'll be able to have them in maybe after they've gone through, and I know there's a service project they look to complete and maybe come in and give us a report on what they've done, and hopefully maybe have it in person. So we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed to that. But please send them the regards from the school committee and congratulate them for us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the school committee? Okay. We're going to take a step back now, because I see, I'm just going to actually announce, we've had a couple of people join since I listed. Mrs. Trifilo has joined Mr. Mason and Mrs. Chartier from the school committee. Mrs. Chartier is on audio, but not video at the moment, but she is on. Lisa Parker, our NDEA rep, also has joined the call. And we have Callie Whedle and Patrick Warden, who are representing our Student Advisory Committee, have joined the call. Just so the two of you know, we did jump over student representatives, and I'm glad we did, because now you're here, and we're going to go back to that. I did receive a note from Abby. She did write up something. I don't know if, Callie, if you were going to read what Abby wrote, or if you want one of us to read it, whatever makes sense.
I can read it if I want.
Okay, you're breaking up on us, Callie.
I can read it if you want.
Okay, that would be fine. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Callie and to Patrick to give us an update from our students, our student reps about what's going on at the school. And as Callie indicated, she'll also read some prepared statements that Abby had made about how things are going and what's going on. So thank you.
So from Abby, she said, since our last meeting, the staff and students had a restful and a trouble winter break, which many of our peers agreed was much needed. The students were excited to return to in-person learning. While there were disappointments and disappointment with the shift to remote learning, students hoped
I don't mean to interrupt you, Callie, but we can, it's very to hear you.
The word which passed has recently sent out a survey to students asking for their opinions about remote learning for this semester. Most students agree that their teachers have been very supportive and understanding of it. Okay. I can try moving if you want.
Well.
Yes. Why don't you go ahead and move, because I think your reception may be better based on what we saw last night at a different meeting. If you wouldn't mind, we can go to Patrick and I'll, and we can have him say a few words and then have you try to come back on. And if you want, in the interim, I'm happy to read Abby's words so that we can, we'll continue with those first, and then we'll go to Patrick. And then hopefully by then, you'll be set up if that works. Okay, we're going to try that. So I'm just going to read what Callie was trying to read there from Abby. And what Abby's comments were, were, since our last meeting, the staff and students had a restful and enjoyable winter break, which many of my peers agreed was much needed. The students were excited to return to in-person learning, and while there was some disappointment with the shift to remote learning, students are hopeful that we will return to our normal hybrid setting soon. The Warrior Leadership Class sent out a survey to students asking for their opinions about remote learning over the semester. Most students agreed that their teachers have been very supportive and understanding over the course of the semester, although many students reported that they're feeling overwhelmed with the demands of online learning. The students and Warrior Leadership are currently working on solutions to this issue and are optimistic that they can help promote a positive learning environment, or a positive learning experience, excuse me. The senior class officers and advisors met earlier today and began to work on plans for the traditional senior class events, although now set in a COVID-friendly environment. Though the current situation has limited what the class has been able to do so far this year, the officers and advisors strongly believe that with the help of administration, they will be able to create a close-to-normal end of the year for the class of two thousand and twenty-one. Over the past few weeks, many seniors have gotten college acceptance letters, and many more students are anticipating them in the near future. Although there were many challenges with SAT tests being canceled, college fairs not being held, and campus visits suspended, a lot of our seniors were still able to persevere through the difficulties with the help of Narragansett's outstanding guidance counselors. So those were the words from, from Abby. And I just want to thank Abby for sharing her thoughts with us and because she could not be with us here tonight. I see, Callie, you're back. We'll go to, we'll go to Patrick first, if that's okay, Pat, or we can have Callie, which either two, the two of you want to jump in. I will turn the floor over to the both of you.
Um, I think Abby's words are pretty much sum it up. The, ever since break, things have gone, been going pretty smoothly. Again, yeah, as she said, a lot of people are disappointed with the transition back online, but we all understand that it's necessary, and we're doing everything to keep everyone safe. So I think, I think that pretty much sums it up.
I definitely agree. Abby did a great job summing things up. I would also like to add though that winter sports helped up, and basketball is running, which I know is making a lot of kids happy. I know we have a really high percentage of people who are watching the games that are being recorded, which has been very fun to hear kids talking about it and actively wanting to watch the game and really being included in things.
Great, thank you, Callie. I see you've muted yourself, so I'm assuming that you, you were done sharing. I did want to put a plug in, because we do have a YouTube channel for our sports. It's Gansett Athletics. If anyone wants to look up the YouTube channel, you will be able to view any games that are being recorded. I believe that it's live, so you'll be able to see them live, and the videos of the games are there for people to see afterwards. So it is, it's been a great addition to the sports to be able to have the ability, since one of the drawbacks of the sports season is we can't have fans in the gym. And I'm sure Dr. Kazimant will talk a little bit about sports when we get to our COVID update, which is coming up. And it's just wonderful to be able to provide the, the athletes the ability to be seen, even if it can't be on, by, it can't be in person, you know, especially for the parents and the family, you know. But we have an active student body who loves to go to our athletic games. And I know that there's a lot of people tuning in and a lot of students tuning in as well. So Gansett Athletics, it's the YouTube channel, if you want to check out what our sports teams are doing. Any comments from our school committee for the student reps? I don't see anything at this point. Thank you, Patrick and Callie, for sharing your thoughts. And again, thank you to Abby for sending hers in. We appreciate your, your time here. We We appreciate your your time here. We hope that you'll stay for the meeting. You're more than welcome to, but we certainly understand if you need to drop off, if you've got homework or anything else that you need to do, but thank you for taking time out. It's important that we hear what you have to say. And as a school committee, we value the input and the insight we get from your comments to hear how things are going, especially during these times when it's just, it's not normal. There's nothing normal about what we're doing now and to hear positive things that are happening. So we appreciate the feedback. And I look forward to, I know Abby mentioned the Warrior Leadership Class and some of the things they're looking to do. So I'm kind of looking at you, Mr. Young and Mrs. Brown about, you know, where that Warrior Leadership Class is going to take things as far as helping with some of the issues the students are having. So thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Next up, we have public input. I know that as of the time of the meeting, there was no public input. I'm looking at the YouTube stream right now. And I do not see any questions or comments by the public. We'll keep an eye out on that stream and if anything does pop up, if we can address it, we certainly will. But, you know, we will keep an eye on that. Next up, we have the NDEA. We have Ms. Parker here with us, so I will turn it over to you for an update.
Hello. Honestly, I'm going to say that Callie and Patrick pretty much summed up the way the teachers feel too. The break was definitely probably needed by everybody. Good way to refresh. But we were all, you know, hoping to go back to school after the break, but totally understand why things are the way they are. But it just seems like teachers, teachers are really getting used to transitioning back and forth. I know it's hard on families. I know it's hard on children. It's hard on teachers, but we get it and everybody seems to be pushing forward and doing an amazing job with teaching remotely as well as the hybrid and the live streaming. Everything seems to be going well in that sense. Report cards went out before the break, a little bit before the break. So it's a little different not having parent teacher conferences, but it seems like parent communication has been really well, going really well with between teachers and parents and families. So hopefully things will continue to get better for everybody and we'll get back to some sort of normal in the near future.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Parker, for the the update. And it's, again, just like from our student reps, you know, hearing that a lot of those sentiments are echoed by the the teachers is good to hear. It has not been easy for anyone. And I know we say it so much that it starts not to feel genuine when we say it, but we truly appreciate the level of dedication and service from everyone in in helping us through all these transitions we've had to make. You know, keeping everyone safe versus the need for the in-person instruction is always a delicate balance. So right from Dr. Kazivan, who gets to make some of those popular slash unpopular decisions. You know, to every staff member who's there to to jump in and make sure that the resources are in place to make whatever model we've had to go to happen. It is appreciated. So thank you. Okay, next up, we have a couple of budget updates. Just a quick update on FY21. We have a budget from what I understand. It was signed. We so we do know what our finally, after how many months of being delayed. So that is, I hate to say FY21 has been put to rest at the state level. But for right now, we we know what our numbers from school funding is. We and we'll talk more about specific numbers when we get to to the business managers' report and whatnot. FY22, I just wanted to mention that the school committee met last week for another budget meeting. We are anxiously awaiting the governor's numbers, which are supposed to be out on January 27th, which will be next Wednesday. Once those numbers are released, we'll have some chapter 70 numbers. We'll have the minimum contribution numbers and all the pieces that we need to understand the town assessments that we can put in and figure out, you know, what our budget for FY22 is really shaping up to be. I know Ms. Geister mentioned that we've received some numbers for retirement. We're still waiting on a few others. But if anyone wants to hear more about that, I encourage you to go out to TCTV. You'll find the video from, did we meet Monday? I don't know which Monday it was, whichever meeting, whatever night. And look at our finance meeting. There's more information there. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazivan and Ms. Geister real quick if they want to add anything about FY22 before we move on to the business managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that one of the things that will, and you're right, we have just enough numbers to be frustrated. We don't have them all. But I think in in large part, we we have started the budget process so early, earlier than in the, you know, past years that when it gets to be the end of January, we're, you know, we're looking to finalize or at least get the the numbers on paper. So we'll we'll wait patiently until next week when the governor's budget should be out. I would I would add that, again, for discussion at a later time, but certainly what we would like to start talking about is sped specialization account. And again, I won't go too far into the weeds on this, but ultimately both towns would have to agree at town meeting to to at least form a or, you know, to create this stabilization fund. The reason why I think it's important is because as dollars get tighter and budgets get harder to forecast. You know, sped, you know, special education costs are really volatile. And there are, there are, in fact, many situations and placements that cost, you know, close to, we've talked about this, but, you know, quarter of a million dollars, you know? And that's not unusual. And transportation went up something like 37% sped transportation went up 37% year over year. So what I think, again, for discussion is to, you know, to petition the towns to allow us to form the sped specialization. I mean stabilization fund. So that way, when and if we do have monies that are available to put there for a rainy day to offset, you know, these costs that are there oftentimes are not, we're not able to budget for. And we've talked again quite a bit about that. But as we move forward, I think that that'll be part of the conversation with our towns. I remember towns, but I, you know, wanted to put it on the radar, but certainly wanted to put it out there, you know, you know, to the community. That's something that we would like, you know, we should, we'd like to investigate and look into further. And I think it helps it helps the whole process, quite frankly.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, it'll be good. I know that we had that you had brought that up, you and Ms. Geister at our finite subcommittee meeting. So looking forward to hearing more about how, you know, we would form the meeting, have form the stabilization fund and what the rules are around there. I think, you know, my initial look at it was it's very controlled, not just by the school committee, but by the town as well. So it'll be interesting, you know, if we can put something together just to kind of get the word out. And I don't know what timeframe we want to look to get this done. Possibility maybe to to put it on the town meetings for this current year and at least establish the fund. We don't have to put anything in it. We just need to get the fund established and then we can go from there. So looking forward to hearing more on that. Thank you.
Emery, do you have anything other than on that or in general?
I know that the towns have to establish it. They have to vote to agree to establish it. And then I believe it comes under school committee, has to vote when it gets spent. You can't, you can't fund it like you can't just fund it and say, oh, we have leftover money. Let's put it in there. You have to plan from it from July 1st on. Because the reason that the towns are involved is they have to be aware that some of their assessment is being used to fund that stabilization account. So the hard part is going to be funding it. The easier part is getting it established. But with all of the rising cost of tuitions, I I think it makes sense that we start looking at a way to put a little aside. I mean, it probably will be quite a few years before there's enough to actually help out in an emergency situation. But we have to start somewhere.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments so far? I see none. We'll move on to Ms. Geister and our business managers' report attached to the agenda where the financial reports. So I'll turn it over to you, Anne Marie, if you want to give some, you know, report out on the numbers and and then we'll see if anyone has any questions.
One of the things that I want to draw the committee's attention to is our revolving accounts. I just want to make you aware and just sort of remind you that we have several of them, preschool, extended day, cafeteria, there's quite a few of them that pay salaries. And there's no revenue sources going into them this year. So I'm keeping a close eye on them to make sure that they don't go in the red. So so we may have to move some of those salaries into the general fund as we get closer to the end of the year to keep those accounts whole. So that, just put that in the back of your mind, that that's something that we may have to address in the future. I don't know if you noticed, but we did get two new small special ed grants. One of them is focused on district-wide special ed professional development for staff and then the smaller one, $1,700 is focused on professional development for the preschool special ed staff. The other, like those are the, that's really the only two new things. The the big news since our December meeting is that our the reopening grant that was supposed to expire on December 30th, the deadline was extended until next December. That's great, but for us, we had anticipated it all being spent by December 30th, so we only have about $1,200 remaining in ours that is unspent. So our money is used up, but it's good that we can spend $1,200 when we need something in the spring. Other than that, the the rest of the grants are, most of them are salaries, so they're, they're pretty self-explanatory. They're just paying staff to educate our kids.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on any of the reports or comments that Ms. Geister has made? I did have a question. I just, and I'm just going to put it out there. I know. And we've talked about this, so it's more of a leading question. There's some new grant money that I hear that should be awarded sometime soon. It's the second round of the, well, I guess it was, we were calling it the reopening grant or are they Esser monies or whatever you want to refer to them to. And I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge that we know that there are some other grants that are coming our way, but we don't have exact details on that money yet. And I, unless something's come out in the past, maybe six, 12 hours, which I don't think it has.
No, it hasn't. They're they're saying that it's supposed to be three times what we received. But it's based on Title I numbers, so we don't know if they're using last year's, this year's. So hopefully that's one of those numbers that we find out next week as well because it sort of goes hand in hand with our budgeting.
Great. Okay. Again, any questions or comments for any anyone else have on on the numbers, the financials at this point? I know we do talk more about them when we meet on finance and in our finance subcommittee meeting, but is there anything that comes up as of right now? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to the next topic, which has several items under it, the COVID-19 updates. We're going to talk about, I think Dr. Kazivan's got a list of updates for us from HVAC to sports to testing to MCAS and learning and a nurse stipend that will be funded with a grant. So I am going to turn it over to Dr. Kazivan.
My favorite topic. Thank you, Madam Chair. COVID-19 is awesome. So I'm going to take a few out of the out of order. I will start with sports. You know, sports, you know, we many of us were, you know, wondering if basketball would or winter, pardon me, fall too. So it'd be hockey and a basketball for us. How that would, how that would go. And so far, you know, knock on wood, it's it's gone well. The protocols that are in place are pretty stringent. They've they, for the most part, have worked quite well. We've, I think we've played, I think, four games total. Of course, some of the downside is that, you know, there can be no fans or live fans in any of these contests. And well, but we have that covered and we have two excellent, I think, burgeoning sports play-by-play announcers. They are very, very good and I enjoyed very much listening to them. And so, you know, that's, that's really in terms of getting this getting this going and really moving this forward is all the credit to the kids, of course, the parents, the coaches who've had to learn how to coach differently. And of course, Ben Gagnon, our, you know, our athletic director, who's really had to really keep ahead of this, which is difficult. So we've, you know, it's gone well so far. And I think that we've, we've, it's, we've benefited by by having sports and although it doesn't look the same and we're playing teams that we would never play normally, it's still, it's still basketball and it's still hockey. And and I think the kids especially, you know, appreciate that. So it's gone very, very well. COVID testing, we, you know, we talked a lot about COVID testing. And so we've, we're, we, as as the committee knows, BinX Now was a program that was put out several months ago that requires a lot of tests, a lot of training and a lot of oversight. We're only one of two districts in this general area who were either Ply or were selected Gardner and Narragansett. And that put us in a really great position, you know, and we were pretty excited that we would be able to give a rapid, you know, COVID test to to adults or to students, of course, if in fact we had permission to do so. A couple of weeks ago, the commissioner put information out that there would be pool testing. And in general, how that works is that you, every Monday, let's say, you know, Mrs. Smith's math class would, you know, and teachers, et cetera, would be given a rapid test. They would be tested in batch, right, as a pool, as one group. And if one of those came back positive, right, it's not a positive necessarily, you would go really to next steps, which in our case could be BinX Now. Or to send them to, say, to Haywood or, you know, for actual, for test, you know, down there in the tent or in the building that they're currently using. That is all designed, quite frankly, to keep people in schools and to keep schools open. And I'll get to, of course, one of the biggest disruptors to the educational process is when we have to quarantine until we find out if folks are positive or not and then figure out all the case tracing. So that is, you know, that's that's coming. And we've been very very fortunate to have been part of that and our nurses, nurse leader have done a tremendous amount of work, which we'll talk about a little bit. In terms of Vax, you know, the actual vaccine, you know, our nurses were vaccinated several weeks ago. They were part of the first wave. And, you know, a shout out to Haywood Hospital, who thought, you know, enough about the school and the school nurses to add them to the initial group and that not just Narragansett, but Gardner, Ash West, Winchendon, Athol. And I'm sure I'm missing, I'm missing someone, but you know, that was a, that was a really, you know, a big, a big deal, quite frankly. We're now trying to, we're trying to now get our paraprofessionals and teachers whom work within, if not within three feet, a lot closer, to put them on the list right now that these, the rolling vaccines come. So we've talked to Dr. Parker, who is our, our physician for the district and she has she has taken that information and, you know, those folks are on a list and that's fantastic. Now, where they are on the list, I can't tell you. I do because I don't know. And there's, of course, this list is pretty long, but in fact that they are in queue. And I think that that again speaks to our Health and Safety Committee, who are really trying to be proactive. Not only looking at the numbers and whether or not we come, stay in or out of of hybrid or remote, but looking for, trying to find some answers and to get our folks, you know, vaccinated, not as quickly as possible, but we were certainly going to follow the rules. But if those situations present themselves, we're certainly going to take advantage of that. So I'll go to HVAC. HVAC, you know, we, we talked a lot about HVAC when we sat down with our both unions. Quite frankly, and everyone said, oh, I wonder how our HVAC Um, quite frankly, and everyone said, oh, I wonder how our HVAC is doing. We were pleasantly surprised that it was, uh, it was working well. Uh, we, we certainly had some work to do and we did that. Um, without disruption to the process and to classes, et cetera, but a lot of work has been done. And we, you know, we're gonna, we, of course, um, are keeping not only a close eye to that, but we're looking to the future. And what does that mean? Well, we, we want to make sure that our system is as, um, is robust and is well-functioning as possible. And, you know, in the very near future, and obviously we'll go through the, uh, through the facilities, subcommittee. But we'll have some, um, ideas about, um, where do we go next and what does, you know, and what does that mean? And where do we need to improve? Um, where do we need to be proactive? One of the things that we presented last, uh, I think it was last, uh, school committee meeting was that we, um. Applied for and received seventy-two or four, seventy-four, I believe, um, air purifiers free. And they have been, um, distributed throughout the middle and high school. Again, our ventilation is fine. These are really, for lack of a better term, icing on the cake. Um, and when those situations get that our, you know, our rooms have to be completely closed up because it's really cold out. These will not only clean but cir- help circulate the, um, the air in the classrooms. So we've, we've tried to keep, you know, keep forward and keep moving forward, you know, in that regard. Um, summer learning. Um, one of the many, 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 many things of the Ursa Two grant covers. Um, because they like to spend our money for us before we even, um, receive it, don't you know? But, um, what, what we're, but seriously, what we know is that, um. You know, although our teachers and our administrators are doing a fantastic job, this isn't, this isn't what we would call typical education. So our summer programming, um, summer school, so to speak, will, will be, will be expanded. Uh, to, uh, to more kids than we normally would have, um, say on a reg-, you know, a regular school year. What will exactly what that look like? We don't know. Um, one, we need to find out exactly how much money this Ursa Two, you know, has. Um, coming and we've, we've got to look at need. Because we are response, uh, responsible for, uh, an extended school year for some of our, um, special needs students. But, um, we intend to expand that, um, beyond just that, that select group that may be identified in. Um, the IEPs. Uh, so, uh, more to come with that. Um, again, we really haven't. We certainly talked a lot about it, but it's, it's about allocation and, and, and money, quite frankly. So we are, we're, we're staying, um, on top of that and being proactive in that regard. MCAS, uh, you know, you know, it's. Yes, we're still gonna take the MCAS. Uh, what it'll look like, I don't know. Um, quite frankly, but what I do know is that if we're in the current configuration that we are in. Right now, we're gonna have to message this out, um, far in advance, because in order to. In order to, uh, you know. Appropriately give the test with the right distancing, we may have to go remote just to bring in those grade levels that need to take the MCAS test. Now, the MCAS test will have a different, uh, focus, more on the lines of. Um, you know, uh, not so much. I'm, I'm, and I'm spacing the word though, Kate, but I'm trying to think of, um, the right word in terms of what the MCAS will do for us. But it'll really be more diagnostic to see if the learning loss, where have our kids, uh, you know, where do they start and where do they finish? I know there's a really good educational word that's escaping me right now and, um, but, um, they're, they're, they're. They are slowly trying to roll this out, but it's going to take quite a bit of, um, logistics. To, to make that happen if we are still in the current configuration. So, again, I, I, I wanna just pause for a second because there are two other pieces that I want to get to. Of course, the proposed COVID nineteen nurses stipend, right, uh, which I need to expand on. And, um, and well, really how we, how we ended up in remote, um, this time around. So, Madam Chair, if there are any questions?
Does anyone have any questions at this point on the topics that we have, uh, that Dr. Kazman's addressed? Nope, I don't see any, so, um, if you want to move on to, whatever order you want to take it.
So the COVID nineteen nurse, uh, the proposed COVID nineteen nursing, um, stipend. Really was born from, uh, the two topics that I've spoke about already. One, there is the, uh, there's the part about having to go through the trainings. And I'm gonna call it certifications, because quite frankly, this, it was pretty rigorous. As far as I'm concerned, in terms of the BinX Now rapid test. Um, of, you know, now that we're going to, uh, we should receive it any, anytime, if we haven't received it already. But the kits for the pool testing, um, that everyone without a doubt is working harder. Um, longer, there's, there's, no one, no one would argue that. Um, I think though, in the nurses' case, is that it, it is, as I wrote. That not only time, but the amount of days, uh, that, that they're required to, um, to work, quite frankly. When we do case tracing and you've heard numbers which are confirmed, these are not inflated by any stretch. That one or two positives or potential positives can and have created anywhere between fifty or seventy. Close contacts that have to be case traced. That generally has to be done, of course. Well, it can be done during the school day, as I, as I alluded to in my, uh, into my narrative. But you still have to be the school nurse, so especially at the elementary level, it, it, it still hasn't stopped. So much of this has to be done at night, but also on the weekends. Again, when we get the call of a potential positive. When we're told that there is a confirmed positive and we have to then now case trace. That can take a very, very long, it does take a very, very long time, and it requires all the nurses at one time. To do that, because we, they have to split up sometimes, uh, the number of people for case tracing. So it, it, it dawned on me, quite frankly, that, that they're not just working above and beyond. They're working far above and beyond, especially when situations that put us, um, in remote this time, for example. Um, could take several days and, and, uh, mostly the weekends at, at times. So it, the mechanism is available within the contract, quite frankly, um, uh, to, to. Propose this to the school committee. The funding, um, that I, that I also noted was from the. It could, honestly, it could be from either, from the Ursa or FEMA, uh, grants. We, we utilize the FEMA grant. Um, in this case, uh, to, um. You know, uh, to, uh, allocate the funds. Um, how did I come up with the number? Uh, quite frankly, what I did is, if you look at the amount of time, and, and again. If you look at the amount of time that, say, a JV coach or a freshman coach, um, in any sport takes in terms of total days. Um, and you look at the responsibility, uh, of say, a, um, a teacher leader, which. Again, this is a lot of, this, this is crucial stuff that we're doing here. It, it, it falls in line with the monetary amount that I identified in the, um, in the proposal. It, so, in essence, that's, that's the whole story. What I'm looking for, um, from the committee is, um, an approval of the stipend for, for the, for this, for the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, and it would be something that we'd probably, we might have to revisit, hopefully not, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, we're hopeful that that, a lot of that has been, you know, resolved with the vaccine. But, you know, it'd be something that we would want to keep in our back pocket, uh, in, in the case that we might need to keep doing this type of work. I'll pause there, so.
Okay, um, so the first thing, so let's, let's start with. Um, I'll entertain a motion to first, uh, create a COVID nineteen nursing stipend position. We'll start there. Let's get the position to see if the committee wants to create the position, then we'll go from there. So I would, again, entertain a motion to create the COVID nineteen nursing stipend position.
I'm moved.
Have a motion. Okay, I think it was Mrs. Chartier, um, and Mrs. Robichaud with the second. Um, at this point, do we have any questions or comments, um, specific to the creation of the position and why it's needed? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Marx?
I'm working on it, yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier? And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. So we've now created the COVID nineteen nursing stipend position. Um, what we'll address next is the funding of that position. Um, so I would entertain a motion to fund the COVID nineteen nursing stipend position. For an amount of three thousand dollars for each of the five nurses. To be funded through the FEMA Expanded Public Health Mission slash Testing for COVID nineteen Grant. And if that makes sense to everyone, then I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, uh, by Mrs. Trifilo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Mason. Um, any questions or comments on the actual funding of this position? And where the monies are coming from?
Not where the monies are coming from, Margaret, but just if, uh, what happens if the funding source goes away? And we're still in the pandemic? What do we, what do we look at it there? Do we have to come back and rethink this, or how does that work?
So the, uh, it's a great question. I think that, um, this would be for FY twenty-one. FY twenty-two would certainly be part of the discussion, um, in terms of budget, uh, when we get into the budget discussions. But FEMA, um, will go until December of twenty, um, one, right? It was extended, um, till next December. So we would be able to at least utilize a portion of those monies to offset, you know, again, offset that. We'd have to talk about it a little bit, but we certainly, again, both, pardon me, both grants, both the Ursa Two and this. And the FEMA, um, identify this to be a, um, um, an appropriate, uh, fund.
And I'm gonna just ask a follow-up to Jeff's question. So this FEMA grant, we've already, have we received these funds? Because I don't want to flip off, uh, to my other green, so, so those monies are actually in hand, so we.
The town of Templeton, um, was gracious enough, uh, to sit with us at the very beginning of the year. And go through a myriad of different, um, things that, you know, everything from PPE, et cetera. And this was one of, well, COVID nineteen, of course, testing, we didn't know what we didn't know at that point, was certainly part of, um, and, and it was allowable. So, um, we haven't really, we, well, it's been taking a while for us to access it because we had to go through this, but.
Okay, but that grant has been, already been allocated to the town. Um, again, thank you to the town of Templeton, um, I can't say that enough either. Um, or graciously sharing those FEMA monies with, with the district. Um, Jeff, did that answer your question? I want to make sure that, um, it answered your question, yes, okay. Uh, any other questions or comments from the school committee on this stipend for FY twenty-one? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason? I didn't hear you, Mr. Mason, and I need to hear you. I'm gonna go to Mrs. Chartier.
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes says yes, and Mr. Mason will try you one more time. Give me a thumbs up, so I have video record of you agreeing, okay. All right, for the record, Mr. Mason was saying yes, we could not hear him, but he gave us a thumbs up. Um, so that was unanimous. Um, and I, I, you know, would like to just make sure the message, you know, gets down to the nurses. The, uh, the, how appreciative we are, um, for all the work they've been doing. This has not been easy. And they, time and time again, have been tapped to respond every time there is an incident or something to react to. Be it, you know, as simple as being partners on the, the Health and Safety Advisory Committee, uh, and working with. And I think people don't have an appreciation of just the expanse of people they're working with. It's not just the schools. They interact with our school physician, uh, Dr. Parker. They interact with the community health people for, is it the Monticent region? I'm sure I have that.
Case tracing, yeah.
For case tracing. So they are definitely pulled in, in fifty-two directions outside of just what the district is asking them to do. So please pass along our appreciation, um, because this is, I think, well-deserved for the effort that they're all putting in.
Agreed, and we'll do.
Okay.
Um, last, but, oh, sorry. Last but certainly not least, and really to Callie, um, to point about, you know, being, it was frustrating to come, go back and forth. And so we did something a little bit different, you know, when we got back from vacation and we thought that, um, we had waited enough time. And maybe that the, um, kind of the surge would have bated, it did not. You know, the numbers were climbing. When we first came, we had, I forget, I think it was thirteen total. Uh, in some throes of COVID, whether they were positive or were waiting for testing or they were quarantined staff. Which, as my letter indicated, there were twenty-some-odd, um, uh, you know. There were twenty absences for staff on two consecutive days. So doing this so many times at this point, um, you know, you almost get to the point where you can. You can almost forecast what's going to happen in terms of coverage. Um, and it's not, it's not good to do that. It's, because again, as someone said, well, you're gonna just pick a, you know, it's gonna snow. You're gonna say it's gonna snow on a Tuesday and it's, you know, you know, it's three days early, are you gonna call it? Well, yeah, I mean, if I thought it was bad enough. And I, so the, the point I want to make here is that we, it, it, it really becomes very difficult to manage the day-to-day. And we've got some systems set up that if people are out, um, we're able to put kids in, in, say, the Kiva. Um, appropriately spaced and distanced and all of those type of things. Um, and then our teachers, if, even if they're sick, will teach basically reverse remote, right? So they're home, they're sick, but they're, that they're teaching to their class from home and the, the student may very well be in the high school. For example, in the Kiva. We can only do that to, to, for so long, and so many kids. And, and so we are a small district, and if you go back and you look at whatever, how many times we spoke about. How we were going to staff for COVID, we were barely going to make it, if you remember. So that was even with, you know, the monies that they gave us for long-term subs, um, permanent subs. Um, we posted these positions and they, many of them were not filled, quite frankly. So when we, when we came into the school year, we knew, and people had heard me say this, that just by the sheer numbers, without the Kiva situation. For example, we were three or four staff members away from not having enough to do day-to-day. Now, since then, you know, we've seen everything from principals being, being their own administrative assistants. You, you know, we've, uh, again, I went through the, uh, the process of where were kids actually being housed while they're being educated from. It becomes to a point where you, you just can't, you cannot sustain it. And so I guess, what I would, I, and, and I understand that people are frustrated. So what I wanted to do was communicate as early as possible, um, to folks that said, look, we've got to ride this out. Because I, I, the, the call was inevitable at some point, and it, it turned out that it would have been inevitable for some other reasons. Um, in terms of, uh, COVID and, and, uh, this, of course, COVID, because why else? I mean, this is all we talk about. Um, and I understand that people are doing whatever they can. Um, what I'm gonna say again is that we need subs. We, you know, I know that parents and guardians want their kids, those folks who choose, want their kids in school. They want their kids when they're in school, they want them here the whole day, right? So, or day, it's Monday, Tuesday. So what about lunch, Casanin? You've been talking about lunch, yep. We need folks to help us with being a sub. And, uh, you know, uh, again, we don't need ten people every day, but sometimes we do. Sometimes we only need five, sometimes we only need three or six or whatever the case is. But in order to make this happen, I need, we need substitutes. And we need folks who are gonna be able to come in like a sub, like basically on moment's notice. This isn't a matter of money. Again, the Ursa One grant, um, to an extent, the FEMA grant. But even our own budget can handle substitutes. It, so it's not like we're asking for money. They, they, we knew that this was going to happen. Where I'm lacking is the bodies. Why, people may ask? Because we're at three feet. I, I want to make sure I keep saying this. Our children, because of our, either the size of our classrooms or the number of staff available. We had to put them at three feet. So we're for following the CDC guidelines, which we are. And someone is a, a positive. The rule is that anyone who's within six feet, a positive, for more than fifteen minutes, over a twenty-four hour period of time. Needs to quarantine, right? And this, and the quarantine rules have changed, et cetera. Well, if you're sitting at three feet, and I'm in the middle, I'm in seat five, row three. Automatically, five kids around me, right, are now there, they are absolutely now going to have to go, um, to quarantine. Teachers as well, because again, our elementary teachers are, again, out and about. We've got support staff that have to work with, with kids a lot closer than, than the six feet. So it's a matter of the three feet. What I'm asking again and again. So it's a matter of the three feet. What I'm asking again, and again, it, people have responsibilities, they have jobs. But for those folks who might say, well, I'm not going into, because we, I got a message to say, I'll never work in the school. I mean, you kidding me? It is COVID. We have not had one case of, of school-related COVID exposure or it to the past. It's not, we have not had that. One, because our custodial crew is outstanding. Two, we follow the rules very six feet when they're walking and the whole bit. We're about the cleanest and safest place that you can be. I need people though to help us or at least to consider to, you know, sign up to be a sub for us. And you can do that through central office here. Because I think that's the only way that I'm going to be able to build some consistency here. You know, in terms of keeping kids in. I want kids here. That's where I want them. There, there's no secret to that. The staff know that. My administrative team knows that. Anyone who asks knows that I want children in this building. But the rules and how they're set up right now are forcing me to make decisions that I need to then almost come in and out of, you know, these, these long one or two week remotes, way too many. And that's why other school districts are able to stay open longer because they're at six feet. So it's not of, it's not, we wouldn't have as many close contacts, et cetera. So I want to get off my soapbox because we've been on COVID-19 for quite a bit. But it's important, you know, it's important if you're listening. I don't know how many people are listening, but, you know, you can help the situation if you've got some time and you're willing to come in to, to do some subbing. For, you know, again, these aren't classes of 25, 26, obviously, because, you know, we don't have that many students in at one time. We can't. So I'm, I'm going to appeal to the public again to see if there's any folks who can. Because it's, it's, it's a critical point about keeping kids in school for longer durations of time, which is only going to benefit the kids, of, of course.
Thank you. Anyone on the school committee or anyone else that's on our call have any questions or comments for Dr. Kazvant? Hey, I don't see anybody. Thank you for those updates. Thank you for identifying that, the nursing position and the importance of it. And all of the updates today. And we look forward to our next meeting with more updates. All right. Next up is school committee comments. Are there any comments from the school committee on anything at this point? I don't see any. I, I just have one. I just wanted to give a, a big thanks to an op ed that was put in the Gardner News by Principal Young and Vice Principal Brown. Thanking our teachers and staff. I don't know if anyone had the opportunity to read it. I did catch it when it came out. It was over the holidays and I meant to mention it at a prior meeting. But I think that the words that were shared were an expression that could be had from all of us. And, and looking at the efforts that have been put in. So I just wanted to, to mention that. It was in the Gardner News. So if anyone has access to the Gardner News, you can go look it up and read the very kind words that I think we would all echo to the staff. So thank you for doing that, Colby. That was really a great testament to your leadership of the high school with you and Janet being able to do that and put those words out there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Okay, we will move on then. Surplus item. We do have a vote on, no, I'm sorry, we have no vote on surplus this week. But the next item, so we'll get a pass over that. We do have a donation that the school committee needs to accept. We had a very generous donation from Hayward Hospital of 84 computer monitors of various makes and models that are being offered to the district to be deployed or redeployed or however you want to say it. So I would entertain a motion to approve the donation from Hayward Hospital of 84 computer monitors of various makes and models as was just presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Mrs. Kojal because she was trying to get the, the motion in. Any questions or comments from the committee on the donation? Okay, I actually did want to, I'm going to ask a leading question because I already know the answer, but maybe Dr. Kazvant or Ms. Geister, you could just let us know who these monitors, what they're going to be used for?
Madam Chair, I could, so what happens is when you're teaching remotely or if you're, you're teaching significantly, you have kids in front of you and you've got kids at home. So you're, you're trying to teach off of your, say, your laptop or your computer, and it's hard to do that and see your kids. So by hooking up another monitor, you're able to, in essence, split the screen, see the, see your kiddos and be able to use, say, your, you know, your laptop to do, to do the instruction. So it's been, again, it's been one of those things that we've learned as we've, as we've gone on. When we're here in the district, the elementary has a leg up because we have great, a lot of great technology down there and they can put it to the board. But it's a lot easier that they can see their kids and utilize, you know, all the tools that they have. So that's how they'll be, they'll be deployed in the next, say, week or two. So people are pretty excited about that.
That's excellent. Thank you. That'll be a wonderful new tool and resource for the, the, the teaching staff to have at their disposal. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So it was unanimous. Could we have a thank you letter prepared as we usually do? I'm sure Mrs. Barney's probably already on it. So that we can thank Hayward for this very generous donation. So thank you. All right. Next up is just a matter to put on, on the agenda, school improvement plans. Every time this year, we just put it on the agenda to bring up that school improvement plans will need to, at some point, usually in the April, May timeframe, be brought in front of the school committee for perusal. I believe the superintendent, I think by law is the one who actually approves. We just have to look at them. And I know, Ms. Kalise, that you're usually the one who kind of coordinates. So I will throw that over to you real quick to give any update.
Sure. So we did speak about this. We have been having ongoing conversations, but in fact, this morning, when we had an admin meeting, we talked about school improvement plans. They're in the last year of their school improvement plans. Usually they're a one-year plan at the school level, but we made them two years because we were kind of getting in sync with the district plan. So they're looking to probably by late March, kind of take stock with their staff on accomplishments and then think forward to which of the current initiatives do they want to bring forward? That they want to do additional work on. Our district plan ends at the end of next year. So they'll look at our district plan and see what in that plan can they support? And so they'll both do a stocktake on their current plan and write a new one for the upcoming year. I would anticipate the stocktake would be done in, you know, late March, April. And then the school improvement plans, I told them actually late May, and the reason for that is these are plans that you really want staff input because it has to be a team effort that everybody is working on them. But with COVID, we have limited opportunities for, for FaceTime. And that time is used up with every kind of PD that they need and so forth. So, you know, I, that it's on schedule and definitely it will happen, but it's, it's a difficult thing to do in isolation without the staff and there's so many things competing for staff. FaceTime, so.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for kicking that off. As I said, this is really just on there to remind everybody that it is something that we as a committee do need to look at. I made a note that, you know, we're looking at late May, maybe that, I'm not sure when the meeting in May is, if it'll be late enough or maybe the June meeting, that we'll have those plans presented and we'll, we'll, you know, just go follow up at that point. So thank you. Other items not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours before, there were no items that I'm aware of that need to be brought up at this point, because we haven't heard from Dr. Kazvant enough tonight. We're going to turn it back over to him for a superintendent report. He'll talk about our favorite topic of enrollment and school choice. Give us a little update on our regional agreement amendment committee. There's not much to update, but they are meeting. And, and then we will talk about the PMES building turnover. So I will turn this over to you, Dr. Kazvan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So really honestly, no movement on our enrollment, as you can imagine. We've, again, last week, we, again, we had quite a few people whom went remote rather than stay hybrid. But, but I mean, again, that's not even a, an enrollment question or issue. So we've, we've stayed steady in that regard. In terms of, let's see, what was the next, regional agreement? We, I don't know if Mr. Marks wants to address this as the chair of the RAC committee, but I certainly don't have a problem saying that our next meeting is Tuesday, January 26. And that is, that's, that's quickly approaching.
I would have done it any better myself, Chris.
Oh, good. I, I didn't want to steal your thunder, Jeff, but I was on a roll. Just again, quickly, and we'll discuss this more length, but we did, we did in fact hire a, a director of technology for the district. I sent that information out to the school committee to, well, you can't replace Mike Wakefield for 24 years. But we're going to give it a shot. But he's, so Mike and Jared, and his name is Jared Perrine, pardon me, Jared Perrine. And he will start on April 4th and he will be virtually following Mike and the crew to get the lay of the land over the next couple of months. And so that was, you know, that was a shout out to the, the committee that was in place to do that. I, I leave, I guess I leave the last piece, the, the PMES building turnover update last. So if you remember, and it was the end of November prior to the Thanksgiving break, I, I attended what was, what was billed an emergency meeting with Phillipston Select Board to discuss the, you know, the fate, so to speak, of the elementary school, Phillipston Elementary School. As I updated the committee and sent, we agreed, well, a, we discussed the parameters of, in essence, sharing the utilities until March 1. The committee asked if I would have that written up, you know, documented and to them by December 2nd. They had a select board meeting and so that they could forward it off to their, their town's attorney. Since that time, I have, I have reached out to the town administrator as to, this is just prior to the, the winter break and was told that the information had been, it was sitting with the town's attorney. Today, what I did, well, actually last week, I, I involved Mary O'Connell, which is represents the Narragansett Regional School District and Attorney Falk wrote basically an email slash letter to inquire as to where, what the status was to this, to this agreement or proposed agreement. And response I forwarded to the, to the committee last night was, was simply that it was, that he forwarded basically that information back to the select board. So give or take, by the, by the end of next week at some point, it'll be two months since this issue was discussed with the town of Phillipston. In that time, we have, we have maintained, of course, we have filled the oil and the propane. Of course, the electricity is running. And, but we, we have not, we have not heard in, in any definitive fashion or any fashion for that matter, as to the status or their thoughts to the proposal, which was discussed prior to the Thanksgiving break. At this point, it is my opinion, my perspective, that we, you know, that quite frankly, we're, we don't know where we are because we, no one has communicated with us in any fashion. And, you know, we, we should probably start to move to winterize the building. Quite frankly, we have one more fill-up that has to happen, whether today or Monday or something to that effect, right? This week. It, it's my recommendation, quite frankly, that we don't do that again and we contact the appropriate, you know, folks who do this kind of work, but to start draining pipes and winterizing the building, turning off the electricity, those type of things. I, I don't, again, one could maybe take this as some type of veiled threat. It's neither veiled nor is it a threat. I, I complied with the request to meet at a, in the afternoon, prior to Thanksgiving. We had a good discussion, you know, the, the terms were generally agreed upon. And, but it was requested that their legal department, their, you know, town's legal folks looked at it and we have heard nothing since, since then. So I don't, I certainly will, you know, do the bidding of the committee, whatever it may be. But that's really all I have at this point.
Any questions or comments from the committee? I see Lori, you have your hand up. Go ahead. Just unmute yourself. Perfect.
Have they been using the school for anything since we've stopped using it?
Yes. I mean, and they've, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, again, it's their building. So I just want to, again, going back even further, we've turned the building over in a sense, right? So in other words, they, you know, the town owns the building. We've, we have said here, you know, we're, we're turning it back over. The conversation that was, that I had was just about terms about, you know, being a good neighbor. And, you know, given the fact they were surprised that this was coming upon them. It was really just a matter of the utilities, quite frankly. Now, I was at the meeting where they voted at the town meeting, a special town meeting to allocate, I think it was $50,000 to cover any costs of, of maintaining the building until they could figure out what to do with it. So they, it's, it's, it has always been within their purview as it's been, they, anybody who wanted to use that building went through the town hall anyway in Phillipston. It's very different than how it's, it's done in other, you know, say, TES or here at the, at the district building, right? But again, yes, people have been using it.
So, so my, my follow-up question is, what do they expect us to do? I, I guess you don't know because you haven't heard anything, but does anybody on the Phillipston, the representatives, have you heard anything being a Phillipston resident about this? Because this is kind of crazy.
I haven't heard anything. I drive by and see people using it.
Can you guys hear me?
I, I would say that we are, as Attorney Falk had mentioned to me, that, again, there is no lease. And even if there was a lease, that in the regional agreement, there's a section in regards to the district of the Leese giving at least a year of notice. But as pointed out on that meeting, I believe it was on the 24th, I'd have to double check on that. But the, that is only to, again, a year's notice to re-up for another 20 years lease, right? So we are under no obligation to that building whatsoever. Either by the, well, first off, there is no lease. But secondly, under the regional agreement, there is no, there is no obligation to the, to the district. We've done so with good faith, quite, quite frankly, which by the way, that's fine. If, if kids are using the building, I think the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts use it. I mean, I, no one, no one has questioned that, but the, the fact is that I just need to know how to react because this was not budgeted as we, this was not budgeted. And I, I would rather just receive a straight out, we don't like it, or we don't. And I, I would rather just receive a straight out, we don't like it, or we don't, we're not going to do it. But I have heard nothing, quite frankly. And so, to that point, I, I don't know how to react. I have formally requested through our attorney to their attorney, and of course, personally through an email. And I, I, I do, I do not have any more information than I do at the end of December. And at the end of November, pardon me, or at the end of December.
Yeah, thanks, Margaret. We talked about this. It was suggested that we tell them in January that they were, we were ready to, to turn over the building and that it was theirs in January. And then we talked about giving them some time and communicating with them, and you've done that. It's now the end of January. Granted, they own the building, but if people are coming into a building that, you know, we have lights on, water on, whatever on, we just have to make it, make it, do what you have to do. Close the building, put the pipes, winterize it, because, you know, if somebody isn't going to engage in conversation, then we have no choice.
To your point, Ms. Trufalo, it's my frustration. So, in essence, it'll take a couple of weeks to do that anyway. So in other words, it just, it isn't an automatic process. We just don't head down, you know, it, it takes some time to do that. But, but we have to schedule some folks to do this type of work. So I, you know,
I say, do it.
We'd have to notify them, obviously, but I'm, just so they don't put kids in a building that has no electricity or heat. I just would, you know, certainly no at that point.
So would you like to make a recommendation then, so that you can get a formal motion for the Committee?
I have a couple of questions before.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. So, and I don't know, Chris, I'll direct it at you, but I don't know if it would be you. I don't know if anybody on the Committee. Do we know if this issue has been on the Board of Selectmen's agenda at all? Have they been, have they thought about it? Have they talked about it? Does anybody know?
I, I don't know personally, and quite frankly, Mike.
I'm just wondering, something around, if they're discussing something. I, I just don't know. Okay, the other thing, and, and, you know, we were just talking about it, you're talking about winterizing, getting contractors into the winterizing of the building. Chris, what, what are we talking about when, you know, what are we doing to it? I mean, we're not shutting pipes down. I mean, we're just turning the heat down. Turning, are we turning the power, I mean, we're turning the power off, are we?
Yeah.
What does that entail?
It entails, well, a couple of things, as, as I understand it. Because once you shut the power off, of course, the boiler will not work.
That's what I'm, so you are shutting the power down?
Yeah, we would, because we're, again, without any direction, quite frankly, if, if we're talking about, you know, you know, Casfant, you're building till July 1. I don't care what you do with it. Okay, well, if you don't care what I do with it, then I'm gonna, I need to, I, I need to, what I'm protecting, quite frankly, is ultimately a $5,000, you know, investment. Because if we went, again, it's not a school any longer. Here's the other part, we've already turned it over. You know, I don't, it, it's an interesting case. We'd be more than happy, we've, you already know what the, you know, the, what the, what the request was and what we, what we wrote up. It, it eventually, we just need to, we just need to wash our hands of it completely and entirely. They carry the insurance, they always have. Matter of fact, they insisted on it, quite frankly. And it's just a matter that, and again, Anne Marie could speak to this, but it's, call it four or 500 bucks every time we're filling up either propane and/or gas, and whatever the electric is. So people, I don't know what they're doing in the building necessarily. I don't, we know that they're not doing anything malicious. We, we do check on it, you know, and, but I don't, we, we shouldn't have to pay for something that we, that we're not, we, we are clearly not utilizing.
I, I think I might just make, make the recommendation that, fine, I think if we move forward with starting the process of shutting it down, you know, get, get the contractors in line, and we might want to run it by legal, but I know everything we've been doing has been going email. I think we might want to send a registered letter to the town. You know what I mean? Just to have it documented, you know, I mean, just so we can do that. I don't know if we've run that by legal, but I think that might
Yeah.
at least get it out there. That way, you know, we can still start the process and maybe throw a deadline on it and say, at this point, you know what I mean, we tried to reach out, and this is where we are. I'm sorry.
It'd be my, honestly, it'd be my recommendation through Brian Falk, which is Mary O'Connell, to send a letter to their attorney to simply state that as of X date, which will be, I have to tell you, folks, will be fairly soon, because oil and propane, you know, it's going to get cold this weekend, so we have to make sure we fill, it's not going to last long. So within the next two weeks, we're, you know, that'll be the deadline, quite frankly, because it just won't last that long. And I'm prepared to do that, but certainly want, you know, your direction before I charge Mary O'Connell, you know, to that task.
Jeff, I did just want to answer your, your question about their agenda. So I just popped online and looked. It was on the agenda for their December 2 and December 16 meeting. It was not on the January 13 meeting, and they do have a meeting on the 27th. The official agenda hasn't been posted yet, so I don't know if it would have been on there. And I don't see any minutes from those two meetings I mentioned. So I, I don't know what, what the discussion was. But I did want to let you know that I
At least we know they're aware of it. It was on the agenda. Whether they discussed it or not, we're not sure. So, okay.
So it's, does anyone, I'm sorry, does anyone else, just like I did to Jeff, I don't want to cut anybody else off. Did anybody else have any questions? Because I think I, I will try and interpret what I heard Dr. Kazimski ask for, request for. I don't see any. So I believe what Dr. Kazimski is asking us to do is to instruct him to work with legal, to draft a letter to the town, to be presented to the Town of Phillipston, letting them know of our intentions to winterize or whatever the official verbiage would be, the building, and have it, you know, officially, I guess, closed up, shut down, whatever the term would be. And if someone else wants to work on rewording that so it's more applicable, and that we would like that to be, are we looking at like maybe a February 15 date, Dr. Kazimski?
It would be, as far as I understand it, given the size of the oil tank and the propane and all of that, it'll, it's roughly every two weeks, give or, give or take, depending on a warm day here or there. But it'll be, it'll be probably within the next two to three weeks. And I'll, and I will match that out. I mean, I'll have to look at and talk with folks, but it'll be in that area.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion then to have Dr. Kazimski work with our legal counsel to prepare a letter to the Town of Phillipston with our intentions, as we have discussed, for the, the complete turnover of the building to the town, which may include the winterizing and the shutting down of appropriate utilities and other, you know, whatever else needs to get done. Does that make sense? And if that makes sense to someone, I would entertain that motion.
So moved, and I, I would put the date at February 5?
February 5 or 15?
5.
5, so that's two weeks from today?
That's two weeks plus, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I heard you right. Okay, so I will amend that motion to, I'm gonna let me get Rayanne comment first in case I need to amend it more. Oop, you're on mute. Rayanne, you're on mute.
How good is that? Sorry about that. No, it's, this is not our first letter. It's our first legal letter. But we, the Superintendent has written at least two previous letters. So I'd like to have those referenced to the Selectmen's so that anybody, everybody realizes the effort we've put in to notify them of this situation.
Very good.
And, and I, I just want to say, if, if Hank doesn't adjust, I'd actually prefer to hold the 15th date only because, Margaret, I think when you were reading the website, the next meeting is the 27th, and the 5th would only be a week later. I think, I don't think it would be that bad to at least give them to the 15th. That'd be a couple of weeks after, after they have time to discuss it and review it one final time after receiving the legal letter.
I don't know, we've been discussing it for a couple of months now or more.
I think my concern is that we, you know, the, the letters have been emailed, you know what I mean? I'd prefer to have something legal go over before we, before we do that.
Well, that might mean then another tank of gas.
Exactly. I don't agree. I think the 5th. I agree with Hank.
So let me just be clear about this, that just, I just want to make sure I put something in perspective. The date, Brian is prepared to write this letter sooner rather than later. Because we spoke about the ramifications of, again, of what we're talking about right now. So it, the, the letter will, will be received very quickly from, from Mary O'Connell, too, and I'm not sure the name of the legal firm, but that, Phil, I can't think of the name of it, but they'll, they'll receive that very, very quickly. That's, that, I would, I would also, I would definitely bet that it'll be there by the, by Friday. Without a doubt.
I understand it. I, I mean, again, we, we have a relationship with both towns. It's a longstanding relationship. I don't think another take of gas is going to, I don't think it's that, I don't think it's too much to ask if we have to another week or so. I don't think it's an issue, and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Mason, would you like to rescind your, your motion, and then I can try and recraft it? And we'll go from there. We'll start over.
Over to the 12th, a week later.
A week later, okay. All right. So would you like to rescind your initial motion? And I will, yes, okay. So that motion was rescinded. So we'll start over. So I would, hearing our discussion, I would entertain a motion to allow Dr. Kazimski to work with our legal counsels, council to prepare a letter to be delivered to the Town of Phillipston, informing them of the turnover of the Phillipston Element, Phillipston Memorial Elementary School, and the date of February 12th that we intend to winterize the building or other action by the town needs to be taken. The letter will also include references and the history of the infamous Day Before Thanksgiving meeting, plus all the communications that have happened since then. So if that, yes, Mrs. Trufalo?
We said registered letter, so it doesn't get lost in the mail.
And that letter will be registered.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, with that addition of the registered letter, I would entertain a motion to do as such. So now I have a motion by Mr. Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Again, we've moved the date to February 12th, which seems like a good compromise. And seeing no other questions or comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marks?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mason, for allowing to approve that.
Mrs. Natson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trufalo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Shortier? And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was unanimous. So Dr. Kazimski, once again, thank you for coordinating this effort on our behalf. And if you could just update us, once you get in touch with legal and, you know, keep us informed as to the status of the turnover.
Will.
Okay, thank you. All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add for your Superintendent report? Okay, I am actually going to turn it over to Ms. Kalise at this point. We have two topics. The first one is the 2020-2021 Program of Studies, which is this current year. I think there's an addition of course of courses. But I will turn it over to Kate to go ahead and discuss the need for us to, we're going to probably have to take a vote, and I'll let her go and discuss what that new courses would be, what the new courses would be. Sorry.
Sure, thank you. So as I've said before, in academic subcommittee and possibly also at school committee, I can't recall, with the transition of leadership at the high school, there has been kind of recalibration. So, you know, Mr. Young has been putting a keen eye on the program studies and the courses that students are enrolled in. And for a number of reasons, there are some courses that have run this year that were not officially in the program studies, and there are different reasons for that. And Mr. Young will get into a little more detail on that. Some of it has to do with COVID-19 and the changes that have happened this year that could not have been anticipated. Some of it is in a category of, these are courses we have run, and we're not exactly sure why they didn't make it into the program study. So there's been a little bit better calibration, I think. And there are a couple of other reasons. So I'm going to screen share some of the context and then the courses that we're talking about, and Mr. Young will address them specifically. So can you see this now? Okay, so there's more detail, but I, I'm not sure that we'll need to go into that. The first page that Mr. Young will talk about will be courses at the 9 through 12 level. And then the second page is courses at the 8th grade level, which, of course, we're not in the program studies in the past because we have a reconfiguration this year.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kalise. I appreciate that. And at the outset, I would say, you know, thank you to the Committee for, you know, previous, previous discussions around this and academic subcommittee around the understanding of, of being flexible, which has been incredibly important, trying to open the high school doors at the beginning of the year, frankly, in the middle, in the middle of, of a challenging pandemic. So there are six reasons that the courses that are listed below, we're bringing before you now. And I'm happy to elaborate on any or answer any questions, of course, that, that you might have. But one is, as, as you all well know, the State has put various safety protocols in place. And so courses, in particular, within the music program, for example, we simply could not run a variety of courses in the way that we typically would if we were respecting guidance around things like playing instruments, for example, right? So you'll see some courses when we scroll down that are really a direct reflection of, of needing to pivot so that we could be protective of our students taking these courses. And of course, because after this is all over, our graduation requirements are still intact, right? So one is to respond to safety protocols. Number two is we had personnel movement as a result of a variety of things, folks moving on, folks needing to, in their minds, be protective of their families and so on and so forth. And so even though the State has loosened up restrictions on teachers being able to teach out of content area somewhat, the reality is certain teachers are, are not equipped to, to teach, for example, chemistry, if you've never taught it before, and, and meet the needs of students. So that's reason number two. We also found in putting a clean, a keen eye on this, as Ms. Kalise mentioned, that we have students that had I E P accommodations in place. Those are legal documents. So we needed to make sure that we were running courses to, to meet the needs of those requirements. And another number here, some of these courses were implied in the program of studies, but were not explicitly stated. And those are sub-separate courses in particular. So we added those in to make sure that the program of studies is really reflective of, of, of what is happening in the day to day. And then finally, we've, we've absorbed the 8th grade. So frankly, I don't know that an 8th grade course menu would need to be in the 912 program of studies per Mass Corps requirement. But if the 8th grade is housed under the high school, it makes a lot of sense to, to make sure that that is there. And one thing that was difficult to account for was, in absorbing the 8th grade, we frankly needed to make sure that 8th grade students had electives. And as personnel moved between the two buildings, we found ourselves in a position where we needed to make sure that, again, 8th grade students had the electives that they needed to both fill out their schedules and, and meet their, and most importantly, meet student interest. Finally, we have a couple of courses that are direct response to either our bullying prevention and intervention plan or state law. And I can certainly point those out when, when they come up. So Ms. Kalise, if you're able to
Yeah, so I'll scroll. So I think this is all of the 9 through 12 courses, and then we'll go into the middle school, the, excuse me, the grade 8 courses.
So just a quick overview, the resource classes that are mentioned, those are to fulfill student I E P needs. Those have actually been running for several years, but were not explicitly stated in the program of studies. They were kind of implied, so we wanted to make sure that they were there. The Warrior Leadership Program is essentially meeting the need of our bullying The Warrior Leadership Program is essentially meeting the need of our bullying and intervention plan and 37O, the bullying statute, that basically says you have to provide students with an anti-bullying curriculum and education. So this, this course does that. The chemistry course responds to the, the teacher need, the, the change in personnel that we mentioned, so students could stay on academic track. The general US history course is another one of those type of needs. The performing arts courses mentioned are, these are courses, you know, if we couldn't have students singing, we needed something else. So, you know, piano and appreciation of music were classes that fit the skills of our personnel, but all student interest need and respecting the COVID-19 precautions. Finally, academic coaching is not even really a course, per se, but it is an intervention. We figured we, we wanted to get in your eyes on this. This is something that if we do file a child requiring assistance, you know, if we file that with the state, the state comes back to us and says, what are you doing for chronic absenteeism and attendance prevention? By statute, we have to have a, a program of that type in place at this time. So this sort of is our way where we say, hey, to the students, you have been chronically absent, and we're gonna set up a personalized goal to address that. In addition, that is helping us address students that are struggling as a result of the pandemic and remote learning and all those things. So it's, it's one swing at trying to better support students. So we, we added it here. So those are the ninth grade courses.
So I'm inclined to leave it there and see if anybody has any questions. The eighth grade courses, we certainly can review if you like. They're on the list. It's, I don't think as critical as the typical, you know, the ninth grade, nine through 12 program of studies.
So just out of respect for time, because we are reaching seven o'clock and we still have a couple things to, to do, could I request that maybe we take the eighth grade piece? Maybe if, even if you forward it to the committee, and we look at the eighth grade piece separately. We are not required to have that, I think, as, as Mr. Young stated, as part of our program of studies officially, but I think it is good if we do that. And if we can get a preview of what will be in there, and we're positioned for next year to include it, I think.
Sure.
Sense.
And I think this document is shared with you, and they are all listed here.
Okay, great. I just had one question based upon our conversation, maybe from academic, I don't remember which, which meeting it was. Were there also courses from the Mount that we wanted to address this evening to, that they potentially, it was a fire sciences course or something, that we wanted to make sure that the committee addressed? Is that part of this, or did you want to bring that up separately? I didn't want to lose.
I think fire sciences is for next year, if I'm not mistaken. Can you confirm that, Mr. Young?
Well, I think we did have, and we have historically had a couple students take that. I think we had one. I, I believe in, in reviewing some of the legal, I believe that would just be a straight dual enrollment. But the, the, the courses that the students are taking, that we have a larger group of students, is a sociology course that the Mount has offered to the district free of charge. And that course is in our program of studies currently.
Excellent. Good. I just didn't want to not have us acknowledge a class if we needed to ensure the student received credit for it towards the graduation requirements. I, I think that you're correct. Let's, let's turn this over to the committee and see what questions or comments they have. I believe the intent would ultimately be to make a motion to accept these courses as part of our program of studies for the current year, so that students that are enrolled in them will have the credit given to them towards the graduation requirements. So with that in mind, are there any questions or comments from the committee on these classes? Okay, I don't see. I only have the little strip here, so I don't see anybody. Okay, so seeing none, I would then entertain a motion to update our program of studies with the list of classes that include, I'm going to read them for the record, Resource Algebra I, Resource Geometry, Resource Algebra II, Resource Financial Algebra, Warrior Leadership Honors I, Warrior Leadership Honors II, General Chemistry, General US History II, Fundamentals of Music Appreciation of Music, Introduction to Class Piano I, and Academic Coaching. So I would entertain a motion to add those classes to the current program of studies, which would be for the school year 2020 to 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Kojal. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Marx. And I'm just gonna ask Ms. Kalise, if you wouldn't mind to stop sharing the thank you, so I can see everybody when we vote. Are there any questions or comments at this point? Last chance. Okay. Oh, no, Mrs.
Oh, Madam Chair, I apologize. I wanted to yield to the, to the committee members. I just wanted to say thank you very much for your flexibility in, in, in considering this. It's most appreciated.
Okay. Mrs. Natson? It looks like you've frozen on us, Lori.
Did you say you were going to add this to 20 to 21?
Yes, this current year's program of studies.
Am I back?
Yes, you are back.
Hello?
Can, can you hear us, Lori?
Back?
Can you? We can hear you.
So it's 20 to 21?
Right, it's the current year's program of studies, which we had initially approved back in maybe.
Okay, so I'm wondering, is it going to 2021?
I'm, yeah, these, these, we will get a new program of studies. I don't know if we do that, probably June, August, some, for next year. Later on, that will include these changes and anything else.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing them, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx? You're muted.
Yes, I know.
Mrs. Natson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So those classes, we've approved and can be added to the program of studies. Ms. Kalise?
Before I turn it over to Dr. Kazivan to introduce our next topic, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Young and Ms. Brown and the teacher leaders and all of the teachers that have been really working diligently on the upcoming program of studies. You know, we have, we've had to kind of do this little bit of recalibration because of various circumstances that Mr. Young listed in the context in the beginning of that document. But he's really been doing a tremendous job working with his staff, looking at the courses, and looking forward to next year. So I think, you know, when we get to that point where we're introducing a program of studies for next year, it's really thanks to a lot of good, hard work that he's been doing with the, with the teacher leader team and with others.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You, you stole my thunder there. I was just about.
I'm sorry.
No, but I was gonna include you in that, thanks. So, you know, we appreciate keeping us in the loop with all of these changes that need to be made with, you know, in response to not only the current situation that we're in with COVID, but all of the changes that we've had to put in place, be it for law or staffing changes. So we appreciate you being on top of that and keeping us informed and having us make these updates where necessary. And we look forward to seeing what we have in, in store for next year as far as the program of studies go. And, and thank you. And if you could just send our thanks down to everybody who's been working on it. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you to the committee. Thank you, Madam Chair. Most appreciated.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna turn it over once again to.
Listen, there's never enough, there's never enough Dr. Kazivan time, as far as I'm concerned, right? So no, but truthfully, honestly, this, we save the best for last. I want to make sure that I, I, I position this well. This, this initiative, social emotional learning has absolutely been the focus, quite frankly, on, in many, many of our discussions. It is in our strategic plan, as you know, to effectively address the social, emotional, behavioral needs of all students. We just don't write those words. We've worked very hard to do that in many, in many ways over the past several years. So when we were looking, when we needed to hire a, a new school psychologist, we knew that we needed someone whom, you know, certainly had a a, a, a grasp of, of social emotional learning, but certainly was able to communicate not only the, the needs of the staff and the students, because remember, it's, it's for both. But, but to look at this information and to look at this, I, I'm gonna call, I'll say this issue, right, this topic diagnostically. It's one thing to say to improve social emotional learning, but it's another thing to really kind of get a handle on that. Again, I'm gonna go back to my, one of my first comments a couple hours ago, when I introduced Ms. Brown. It is not lost on me that some of you are seeing Mr. Matt Holloway, who's our director of what services, probably for the first time. You've heard a lot about him, I know. I, you know, again, depending on what meeting we've been in. But we're not, we're not here to talk about him. Who are actually here to talk about, quite frankly, is Ms. Ashley Niggle, who is, yes, a school psychologist, but she also fills the role as the assistant, people, personal director. And that was done with, not with just a carefree whim. We, we had to find the right person, quite frankly, and we did that. And Ashley comes with a, a boatload of, of, of experience, you know, and great insight. And so it really is my pleasure for, to not only introduce Ashley to you, I think for the first time, but to really go through, which I realize the time is getting late, but this is probably the most important topic that we can deliver to you. I don't need to belabor the point about six or eight or 10 years ago, some of the issues that we had socially emotionally here, we had a very high rate of, of suicide. We know that. And we know that, given COVID, given everything that's going on right now, that we're, we're not connected as, as well as we'd like to be with our students, with our staff. So this was vital, that, the work that actually is going to, to speak about here. And I, and I, first off, couldn't, I cannot speak fiercely enough about it. And so with all that, I do introduce to you and turn the floor over to Ms. Ashley Niggle.
Thanks, Chris. No pressure there, so I'll try to live up to that expectation. So thank you so much for your time to talk about this topic. It's a great passion of mine, and a couple of you I recognize from some interview committees, so hello again. But most of you haven't met me before, so I just am really appreciative of your time this evening. And I'll try to go quickly, because I do realize you're at the end of your meeting, and that can be a, a tough position to present in. So one thing I would say is, you know, we're gonna talk about universal social emotional screener that was done. And this really ties into the district strategic plan initiative that talks about multiple, multi-tiered systems of support. And part of that is gathering data to kind of inform what we're doing in terms of creating interventions for students and aligning appropriate interventions to students. There's certainly something to be said that you can hurt a student by over-servicing them as well as underservicing them. So making sure that we're hitting that mark of what they actually need is really important. And this work could not have been done without the work that's been done in the district so far. And I'm sure there's way more than when I came on than I can express. But certainly the interventions that are currently in place, as well as the expansion of the student support team, wouldn't, if without those things, this screener could not have been done. So I, I think the work that's been done prior to me coming has been critical in order for me to continue to move our counseling teams forward. Next slide, Kate.
I'm trying. Give me a second. Okay.
So this is just kind of a visual to highlight. Sometimes people think of social, emotional, and behavioral intervention as this own separate thing, and really it aligns very perfectly on top of academic need. So when we think about reading and math support and having tiered interventions, social, emotional needs can be addressed in the same way. And so this universal screening is kind of the, the green area, the assessment of that process for us to move forward, so that we can have data to understand where our strengths are and what areas of need we still have to address. And then we would use that information for data-driven decision-making about the interventions we have in place, which would look like instruction if you're using academic language. So the reason we did this screener now, COVID is an obvious, great reason to roll this out sooner rather than later. Students are much more vulnerable and less resilient right now, and their social, emotional health is most at risk because of COVID. So that was definitely a very large factor in rolling this out. Additionally, research shows that out of all the student population of children and adolescents, you know, that round circle there, that little piece of the pie is 20% are really gonna need something more than what everyone else gets. So it's a small part of the population, but I would also point out the fact that if that 20% goes untreated, it makes for a really unhealthy learning environment for all. So it's important that we address the needs of that 20%. And what research tells us is that, of that 20%, that kind of lighter purple section at the top, that 20%, that's the amount of kids that actually end up getting the services they need. And typically, 80% just either go untreated or unidentified. And this screener has already helped us to identify some of the kids we didn't have on our radar. And we'll continue to do so as we continue to use it moving forward. And then, as I said in the beginning, it's a perfect alignment with the district strategic plan that has already been put out. So what we did was we screened all students, K to 12. The participants included teachers and then parents and high school students. We have, as a counseling team, reviewed all that data. We've looked at what we have in place to support these students at a district level and a building level. We had some students who needed some emergency support that were identified, and because we had such a strong team, and really, I have to give a shout out to our counseling staff. They worked collaboratively together across the district and really supported getting these kids identified and intervening with our highest need students. So that was wonderful to see that kind of come together after the screening results came in. And we're continuing to work on improving the supports and setting up teams. You know, teachers did a lot of the reporting, so we're following up with individual teachers so that we can get the best information to move forward on. So overall, the big picture of what we learned, this is the, the full district's picture. I split it into two areas. So one area is kind of the emotional and behavioral component. So are our kids following expectations at school? How are they doing in terms of sadness and anxiousness and things like that? And 92% of our students were rated as being average or being supported by what's in place currently for them. And so we have this 8% that now the counseling team is gathering more data on and working to put interventions in place for. On the other side of that, we have this adaptive scales. This looks at the social skills of students as well as academic performance. That 40% is actually probably a lot lower than what it actually is. And part of that is because we got some teacher feedback that the survey that they filled out as, for the screener, asked them questions like, is, have you observed in the last two weeks the student resolve a social conflict? Well, our students have less so, social opportunities right now, either because they're remote or social distancing. So I have a lot of teachers giving feedback like, I put, I never observed it because I haven't had the opportunity. And so because of remote and social distancing, we're now taking a closer look at those kids to find out and, and sort out which ones really need social skills support and which ones just aren't having an opportunity in front of their teacher to observe the skills happening. And then obviously, there are kids who are struggling with the, the remote and hybrid model academically. And, and we're aware a lot of, a lot of those kids because we can see their grades. So there weren't a lot of surprises on that end, but again, it continues to give us good information in regards to how our district is doing in, in times of COVID. And then there'll be great baseline data to compare once, once it's all over, right, which should be soon. Fingers crossed. We got some really great feedback that I just wanted to share some specific quotes with you from parents and teachers and counselors alike. Parents who we had reached out to because their student was rated as highly at risk. They showed that they were concerned about their student, and they were really glad that we, you know, came upon their student through this data. Teachers right now are so worried about. Teachers right now are so worried about their kids, you know, usually they have them in front of them all day, every day, and they just don't have that grasp on students. And so they are constantly battling feeling like they're missing something or they're unsure. And so we got a lot of really great feedback from teachers that they were just really glad we did this right now because they are worried about their students and they want to make sure, you know, students are being cared for as a whole child and not just academically. And even our counselors who, you know, this was the first time we used this. So they were like, wow, you know, I called this kid, they moved into the district this year. I didn't even know them because we're remote. And so I had no idea they existed and they really need support and I was able to do that. And so it's been a really rewarding experience, supporting students through the data we got. And we all feel like on the clinical team that we're getting great information from the database we're using and that the information gets to us quickly, which is also really important. So just on a final note, where are we taking this? We are going to continue to review the interventions we have in place in each building. So our building-based teams will look at that and we meet once a month, all the counseling staff to take a look at the greater district. So we'll continue to use this data to track, are we meeting the needs that we have identified through the interventions we have in place? We'll continue to look at individual student needs. So we'll dig into some of those students that might be more of that tier two that didn't need a media intervention, but could use some follow-up at some point. So we're starting as as teams to look at that data. Also, just like our math and reading data, we're going to be doing three screeners a year. So beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year screenings. So we'll have two more screenings between now and the end of the year, which will allow us to just identify are some of the interventions we put in place for students working? And also, are there any changes in individual needs? Because as we know, unpredictable times, students' lives are changing rapidly and their social emotional well-being is changing as well. So I'm really excited about this initiative. I know our counseling team's really excited. I feel like we've already made some really big differences for kids. And so I'm just really glad that I got time tonight to share this with you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
If I may.
My Vanna.
Before we go to questions, I just want to thank Ashley and Matt and Ashley's team that worked on this. This was something that they brought to us to discuss, you know, going back before the holidays and the the principals, the admin team all just got really on board with this and said, yes, we can make it happen. It was a little bit of an ask really for teachers because the older kids can complete the survey themselves, but all teachers, correct me if I'm wrong, also had to complete, you know, the information about, you know, their kids in front of them. And it was, it was a little bit of a hard ask for them, but we felt it was so important to do to really know the status of our students and where they needed help. And I just want to commend Ashley and and the team that she's worked with. And she didn't really, you know, talk about it too much, but there were kids that they've reached out to and caught. You know, we've really had a safety net for some kids as a result of this survey. So I just wanted to make sure we said that.
Thank you, Kate. And I will echo Kate's words. Thank you for all the work that's been done. I know that I personally, and I think I can speak for, if not all, the entire committee or a good subset, you know, getting our hands around social emotional learning. What does it mean? How do we have data to support it? How do we, how do we know we're addressing it? Have been questions that have come up time and again. And this is exactly the information that I know I, and as I said, I think I can speak for the committee. You know, we're looking for to hear about what are we doing to service our kids and provide the social emotional support. It's not just a buzzword that we're throwing out there. And it's not something that's going to go away because this is an integral part of the education of our students. So thank you and thank you to the team that's worked on this. And, you know, thank you to Dr. Kazivan and Ms. Kalis for making this a priority. I mean, it says right in our our strategic plan, you know, that this is a priority. And, you know, we buy into this. This is very important. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? I see no, no questions or comments. They were all shaking my heads, yes, as I was thanking you. So that was, I think, echoed the second sentiment from the committee. And we look forward to hearing another update. You know, maybe a few months out, you know, we'll, we'll work with Kate on on a timeline. I'm really kind of curious to see when you do your second test or second survey or whatever the tool you use, you know, what, what we've learned. And then, you know, maybe after that to find, okay, you know, the teacher's perspective. How is this helping them? Because really that's what it comes down to in the classroom so often. So I'm really excited about the work that you and your team are doing. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Matt, for coming. And we're going to get to, I think, maybe next meeting, we might have you in for for a little bit of an update. So everybody gets to see Matt this time, but we'll get to hear from him at our next regular meeting. So thank you.
He is on the, he's on the schedule, Madam Chair for next, for next month.
A teaser this week, but thank you for having me.
Well, you have a whole month to get your notes together. So. All right. Okay, that was a lot of information we've covered this evening. Our next grouping or subcommittee reports, I'm going to go through these really quickly because I think we have hit everything. The academic administrative subcommittee, we have touched on all of those. Finance, we have spoken to. Facilities, I think that might be one. I know we need to get a meeting together, especially when it relates to HVAC and some other things.
We, just so you know, Madam Chair, we have a meeting on the books for the 4th of February, so a week or so away.
Great. Okay, we'll get a good update from you and at our regular business meeting in February then. Policy, I'll just do a quick update. We met yesterday. We have a plan laid out to finally get through all of the policies we will have gone through in our book at least one time. There were some very, I think, Mrs. Matson and Mrs. Kojal and I were smiling last night going, this is it. We're almost done. So long-term planning, the same thing we did meet last night. We've covered the topics here. Diversity, equity, inclusion, I believe, Mr. Marks, that you guys met last night too. We kind of crossed paths as we were leaving our meeting.
Yes, we did. And just because of time, let me, I'll just give a very quick update. A couple of things, we are working on a proposal, like a submission for Mount Watrusa Community College. They have a graphic and interactive design program that we're going to try to tie in with our mascot updating stuff. I do want to just, again, thank Kate for sending that our way. So we're putting something together that we will get it in there and hopefully we'll get we'll be able to take advantage of that. Also, real quick, Colby is still out there. I want to thank Colby for putting together the students that we now have on our diversity committee. I won't go into a bunch of detail, but I do just want to say thank you. We've got a I think we have a very intelligent, well-spoken group of student representatives and we're thrilled to be working with them. We have, I'll just mention their names. We have Nadia Surin, Maddie Ambrogi, and a Brent Nystrom. So that's it. That's where we are.
Thank you for having them, Mr. Marks.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful. You've got the students involved. And I did want to just also bring up that MASC, our Mass Association of School Committees, is actually having a meeting on Monday because this mascot logo issue is one that many, many districts are dealing with, and they found it so prevalent now that they are doing a Hot Topics Issues of the Day. I forget what they call the series. So I know that I believe, Mr. Marks, you may join. I know I'm planning on listening in to maybe learn some, some information on districts that have gone through this and what could help us.
MASC, navigating the change. So we had it on our agenda last night. We will take part in that as well.
Excellent. Okay. And last but not least, the Templeton Elementary School Building Committee, and Mr. Mason, if you've got any update?
No, we're more or less done waiting for the state to do their, finish their audit and stuff.
Excellent. So maybe one day you're going to be, that's it, we could take us, you could take us off of the, the agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. There was, has been no correspondence that I'm aware of. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 1st. We have discussed doing this via Zoom. This is going to be a finance focus for the FY22 budget meeting. We had a discussion about trying to possibly do this in person in, I believe, the cafeteria. I think, Dr. Kazivan, you mentioned you were going to try and scope that out today, see how it would work. And I don't know if you had.
Pretty far, but yes, we can, we, I really have to talk about camera angle, but yes, we're on it and we'll, we'll send some information.
Okay, so the only impediment to making that happen will be the governor's orders of gatherings. Right now, I believe it's 10 people. This group here is 12 at a minimum. So we will wait to hear what the governor says on, I'm assuming he'll have a press conference like he normally does on Friday to update any changes to his orders, which would be for a Monday. And we'll let the committee know if we're able to do that in person so that we can really dig our hands into the, you know, the paper and pens of the budget and get an update. So hopefully we'll be able to do that and, and figure out how we will either record it or get it livestreamed and we'll, we'll go from there. And our regular business meeting for the month is the 10th of February at this point. If that's got to change for any reason, we'll let you know. There's so many things going on. But we will have a regular business meeting after that meeting. So without further ado, I would just like to thank everyone who has hung out and stayed with us. Those who joined and, and has given some great presentations. And the committee and Dr. Kazivan and everyone on his team for hanging in there because this has been a long meeting. We still have some business to do though. We, and Mrs. Parker, I'm sorry, I didn't mention you. Thank you. Just hanging in there. We do need to go into executive session this evening. So the committee is planning to go into executive session for reason number three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the NDEA and/or the UFCW. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The meeting will return into open session immediately following. We have two things that we will be discussing in executive session. We've got a memorandum of understanding for remote learning from the NDEA, and we also have a draft of a UFCW contract. So without further ado, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session as I stated.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marks. Do I have a second? And I have a second from Mr. Mason. We will do roll call if I can find my list. Mr. Marks.
Yes.
Mrs. Matson.
Yes.
Mrs. Robashad.
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal.
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Hi.
Mrs. Chartier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So once again, thank you for, to everyone who's joined. I know we've had people watching the meeting. We appreciate you tuning in. And, and now I know TCTV will work their magic to send us to our special meeting room. Thank you. We will be back.
I don't want to join.
I don't want to join.
Okay, we're just waiting for. Who are we waiting for?
Rayanne.
Rayanne, okay, let's give her a second. I'm hoping she clicked the right button because there's, that's the two of them. Just give her a minute. Deb, you want to maybe text her real quick and just see if she's lost in space somewhere? Oh, wait. We lost someone else too. Kate's gone. All right, we're just going to give one more minute and then we've, we still have our quorum so we can still take this vote. Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to start our session again. So I'm going to call back to order the Narraguts Regional School District School Committee meeting. We've just come out of executive session and we are back and active in open session. So the only item on our agenda that we have for after our executive session is to approve, let me get the exact wording correctly, the memorandum of understanding for the NDEA for remote. It's called the NDEA Bargaining Proposal Remote MOU. As it has been presented, this MOU was ratified by the NDEA back on January 8th. So I would be looking to entertain a motion for the school committee to approve. Oh, yes, Kate.
So I went back into the breakout room to try to assist Rayanne. She can't, her button isn't showing up to leave the room, but it's going to kick her out in 40 seconds.
And actually, she just got back.
Oh, there you go.
And thank you, Kate.
Yeah, all right. So I, we were already back into open session just to bring Rayanne and Kate up to speed. And we are ready to, I am ready to entertain a motion to approve the NDEA Bargaining Proposal Remote MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding that was presented and reviewed. And this MOU has also been approved by the NDEA in a January 8th, 2021 vote. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
I have a move, a motion by Mr. Marks. Do I have a second? I have a second by, was that Mrs. Kojal? I don't, Mrs. Chartier, sorry. Okay, are there any questions or comments on the MOU that has been presented? Okay, seeing none, here's my list. We will do a roll call vote. Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mrs. Chartier? And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we have unanimously approved the MOU for remote learning with the NDEA. I know the next step is to just sign this to make it official. And if we could let, I know usually Lisa tries to hang around, but this is a late one. If we can let Lisa and Eric and the NDA know that it's been approved, we'll go from there. And I will get back to you, Susan, about stopping by to sign that. I believe it's just my signature you need has the chair. Yes, okay. All right, I don't think we have any other business this evening. I thank everyone for hanging in there. This was an excellent meeting. We had some really good data and information presented. So thank you, everyone who've helped coordinate all of the information. And thanks to the committee, you know, for the the attention that was given to these topics and the support to to all these things. Again, our next meeting, February 1st, we'll be in touch about if we can do it in person. And we will go from there. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion for Mrs. Kojal. Do I have a second? I have a second from, I'll say, Mr. Marks. I think there were a few. I need to do roll call. Okay, Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mrs. Chartier? And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful.